Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco Council Special Workshop and Regular Meeting. Sorry, flipping it over. Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco Council Special Meeting and Regular Workshop. The council thanks you for being part of the city government. At special meetings, the council takes formal action on specific items and during the workshop only discusses issues with no formal action taken. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-gov/agenda and they're also found at the back of the room. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comment and/or questions by contacting the city manager, the city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, can I get roll call, please?
Council members Blaisdell, Campos, Milne, Roach, Serrano, Mayor Pro Tem Brown, and Mayor Barajas.
Present. And with that, would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? And just before we open on item number four, hearings and council action, I will turn it over to a public comment. So I'd like to invite anyone from council chambers. If you have any comments, please step up to the podium, state your name for the record, and proceed. You want to turn on your mic, please? There you go.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Jet Richardson. I represent Habitat for Humanity in the Tri-County area. And so my comment is related to item number forty-nine dash one-three-eight, the ordinance number four-seven-zero-zero, amending PMC title zoning related to residential design standards. And I just want to say, first of all, that very grateful to be a part of what was a strategic planning or workshop process on the housing implementation plan that Jacob Gonzalez has put together, and even more excited to see action being taken on what has been developed from that planning. So as one of the few affordable homeownership developers in the community, I just want to say that I support this. I'm very excited to see Pasco lead the way on making some of these zoning changes that will create more efficient use for our land and ultimately provide more units that we desperately need. So thank you. I would also just say, as a point of clarification, it would be great to see a little bit more clarification around the land use coverage, forty to sixty percent. As lots get smaller and smaller under this policy, we want to make sure that we can still provide standard home sizes. And as another way of saving money and keeping things affordable, looking at opportunities to reduce landscaping requirements, not have not to have zero landscaping, but just more energy, water-efficient landscaping options. All in all, very, very excited to see Pasco make this change to the zoning for residential design standards. Thank you for your consideration on this, and we support this.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a comment? And I apologize, I forgot to mention that we do have a timer here right in front of our city clerk. So if you could retain your stay within your three-minute, thank you for staying within your three minutes. So at this point, I'd like to invite anyone else who wishes to make a statement or comment, please step up to the podium, state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name's Kim Lerman, sixty-five-fourteen West Park Street. Good evening, council chamber members. I come to you tonight in order to be able to share with you my deep appreciation for council member Irving Brown. Though you were appointed, you filled that seat magnificently. The person that will come after you will have very big shoes to be able to fill. They will not be able to fill your shoes. You brought forward your own deep perspective and experiences in life to the council chambers and to serve our city, and you did, like as I said, magnificently. Many, many future students and residents will be able to reflect on your time that you've served with an open mind and open heart. I saw you many a times make sure that you included all. You reached out with people with different ideologies, beliefs, experiences in life, and tried to be able to connect them in order to be able to serve all of your residents. And so though your time is short on the council, it was impressive. And so thank you. And I hope that the city can be able to have you serve in another capacity at some point, maybe like bring back the Inclusion Diversity Equity Council, our commission, would be magnificent. I'm using that word a lot tonight, but however, I really truly feel that our city needs to be able to have community leaders that are open to each other's differences and experiences and be able to integrate them beyond their own lens. And so, Councilmember Irving Brown, Senior, thank you so much for what you've done for our community, and I look forward to seeing you throughout Pasco and continue serving. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make a statement? Please step up to the podium. Second call for comments from council chambers. Please step up to the podium. Third and final call. Seeing none, thank you everyone for your comments, and we'll proceed with our agenda. Next item on the agenda is item number four, hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating there, too. We do have item A, public hearing and ordinance number forty-six ninety-five, the Ad Valorem Tax Property Tax, and General Fund Revenue Presentation by Director Buckley.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Last week, we reviewed the general fund mid-biennium, or excuse me, general fund update on revenues that had been collected thus far as compared to budgetary expectation, and reviewed the elements that form our property tax calculation and consideration of levy setting. And included in this review were the impacts of some things that have occurred thus far in the biennium. We have some slow revenue recognition, namely in the areas of revenue, or excuse me, retail sales tax, building permit revenues, and plan check fees. With the over fifty percent of the biennium remaining and those elements deeply are greatly influenced by residential and commercial development, it's possible that we will get into 2024 and meet budgetary expectations, but that's something to consider. And then also, we outlined that there was included in the mid-biennium or the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget, property sales that were large in nature and may not occur this biennium. That also is a little bit dependent upon the economy and development. On the expense side, we shared that there are costs tied to new, or in some cases, a better understanding of relatively new operational control that the city holds with the animal control facility or shelter and their operations, and our assumption of the Pasco Specialty Kitchen, the farmer's market, and overseeing community events in the downtown area. And so I just highlight those as we move into the presentation related to our setting of the levy for 2024 tax collection. It is necessary to set the levy and for the city to provide that certification to Franklin County Assessor's Office by November thirtieth. And at this point in time, we are outlining two options. Option A includes no increase to the levy collection amount. We are statutorily, we can increase by one percent, limited to one percent, or IPD increase. And IPD this year, the implicit price deflator was higher than one percent, but so we're limited to one percent. And there's two options. Option A has no increase or zero percent. And option B, which is the city's recommended option, has a one percent increase, and that is equal to one hundred and thirty-one thousand five-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. You can see it there on the slide outlined in red. And we are making that recommendation in light of the elements that I just discussed, the little bit slowness in revenue collection, and the potential of not meeting budgeted revenue levels, as well as new costs that are included that you'll soon, I will present in the mid-biennium review related to the animal control shelter, getting that right size, so we can make sure we have the expenditure authority to support operations and the downtown area, those items that the city has assumed. And then additionally, we have some new debt service that we will start to pay in 2024 tied to bonds that were issued in 2023 for various capital projects. Move to this next slide. On this slide, you can see the impact of the levy changes. We have a column, that's what people were, the rate that was assessed in 2023 for tax collection. And then as we walk across the options, you can see there's a cost per one-thousand, and we used a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-dollar assessed value home to make a calculation, so you could have comparison. For option A, the rate decreases by twenty-one cents per one-thousand, and the portion that the City of Pasco would collect is three-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars as compared to four-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars for 2023, and that's a savings or a lower tax bill by seventy-six dollars. And then option B, with that one percent increase, is still a decrease from the 2023 rate by twenty cents, and the difference is a lower tax bill by seventy-three dollars for that house value. And then finally, just to compare the region, this slide shows property tax collection, which is the red line, and then also property tax rate charged to citizens, and Pasco is the smallest column there, both in collection and in the rate that we pass on or assess to our citizens and taxpayers. And that is the conclusion of my presentation about the property tax.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Now, before I open the hearing, do we have any questions or comments from council? Councilwoman Serrano, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes. Director Buckley, can you tell me in the recent past, say, the past three to five years, what we've done year over year with either raising the levy, leaving it stagnant, or lowering it at any point?
Yes, I believe the last time that the levy was raised was in 2018 for the 2019 tax collection. Since then, we've banked our capacity every year, if I recall correctly. That's from my memory.
And I can add to that. I have some memory of that as a finance director at that time. In 2018, we in fact banked our capacity that we had talked about in our last meeting. So the increase in that year from all of the bank capacity of the prior years to build some of the fire stations was about twenty-nine percent. And the city has historically banked it year over year, and then utilized it for specific purposes like that.
I appreciate that, and I think that's an important kind of thread of commentary for the general public to hear. This isn't something that, obviously, we address this issue every year, whether or not to do it, but we're not consistently pushing a higher levy or something of that nature. So where we come out on this, if we raise it, that'd be somewhat against the grain, but then that five-year cycle, if we sit on it, then so be it as well. But I think that's important for the public to know. No additional comment. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Serrano. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none or hearing none, I will now open it to any public comment. There's none, I don't have a list of anyone in particular, but I will open it to the public if you wish to make a comment on this particular item. Please step forward to, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, we need to close the regular meeting and open a public hearing. Sorry, should have had that ready to go.
So with that, this public hearing is now open, correct? This public hearing is now open, and I would invite anyone to make comment. Second call for comment on this particular item. Third and final call for comment on this item. Hearing none, this public hearing is now closed. And with that, can I get a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four-six-nine-five, providing for an increase in the regular property taxes of the city for levy in 2023 and collection in the 2024 tax year, preserving the levy capacity for future years and providing for related matters and further authorized publication by title, zero percent increase from the previous year, 2023, or motion B, I move to adopt.
No, it was just a motion B.
I move to adopt ordinance number four-six-nine-five, providing for an increase in the regular...
Mr. Ferguson, for clarification, we will go through motion A, and then go through the votes, and then go through motion B.
Sounds like motion A was made first. That was the first one you read?
That was completed.
Okay, great. So that motion's been made, and so if there's a second, then it will go forward for a vote, and then depending what happens with that, we can go to B if necessary.
So motion A is on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilwoman Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
No. Councilmember Serrano?
Oh, sorry, I only heard no. I'll vote yes on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos?
No.
Councilmember Blaisdell?
No.
Councilmember Milne?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
And Mayor Barajas?
No.
It did not pass.
Thank you. Now we'll go on to motion B.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four-six-nine-five, providing for an increase in the regular property taxes for the city for levy in 2023 and collection in the 2024 tax year, preserving the levy capacity for future years and providing for related matters and further authorized publication by title only, one percent increase from the previous year, 2023.
There's a motion and a second by Councilwoman Roach. Can I get a roll call vote for this as well?
Yes. Councilmember Serrano?
Councilwoman Serrano, can you hear us?
Yeah, I voted no, negative.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Councilmember Blaisdell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Barajas? Somebody's making popcorn.
Madam Mayor, can we take a five-minute recess to have a piece of workshop?
Oops.
Teleport. We still have a five-minute recess.
Yeah.
I'll go get some coffee.
John, can you hear me better? Okay, we are back from our break, and it seems that it was my mic that was a little faulty. I apologize for that, but we are back on track. And with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, item B, Public Hearing and Ordinance Number forty-six ninety-six, 2023 to 2024 Proposed Mid-Biennium Budget Adjustment. And again, I'll open it for Director Buckley.
Mayor, if I may, I would like to give a brief introduction and get myself involved in the end-of-the-year finance fund that I did get to miss last year. So I'm taking a lot of the spotlight from Darcy. I'm just used to it at this point.
No problem. We appreciate your input on this.
So as many of you know, mid-biennium adjustment is something that every city with a biennial budget does. It is a process to capture any unanticipated expenses, any adjustments to revenue, or changes to assumptions. And the changes to assumptions is a really key part to a biennial, mid-biennial budget adjustment, because instead of an annual budget where you're budgeting essentially three months ahead of that budget year, for biennial budget, a planning window is a little bit longer. Council also passed a very ambitious budget last year. You added about one-hundred-and-two full-time positions, and this adds to the expenses. And the budget was built with certain expectations that in the next three to four years' window, that our revenues will catch up to those expenses. This is also something that, you know, when you have a really healthy fund balance, or in other words, savings account, you can afford to take those chances. And council has worked for a very long time to build that fund balance to where it is now, to be able to take, make decisions like you did with a biennial budget. But it is always very prudent to look at the market factors and ensure that we are in a good economic condition when we have the luxury to do so, which is right now. And I just want to add that, you know, when we're making assumptions, just something that everybody would understand here and at home watching, is our interest rate when we were preparing the budget for a regular mortgage was three-point-seven-five percent while we were preparing this budget last year. And that same mortgage rate now is seven-point-eight-zero. And that has huge implications to national and local economic economy overall, and just our world that we're living in right now. So what we do want to let you know is that while we're in a very comfortable position financially, there are decisions that we made that are very important for the city, for a growing and a complex city like us. We are monitoring and looking at all of our expenses anytime we make them, which I'm, I was always grateful, our staff always did. But we're going to be putting some extra rigor around it to ensure that, again, that we're planning for things, and we're, I'm an accountant, so I'm always conservative, but we are making sure that we have the right resources to support our residents and our businesses, but also that we are looking not just next year, or two years, or three years down the line, but looking at four, five years, and not making decisions that might get us into trouble down the line. So... sometimes have to transfer funds, um, and so we'll, uh, reflect that transfer out. Uh, additionally, we did issue debt earlier this year, uh, for the projects that are outlined there, Fire Station eighty-five, Memorial Pool improvements, the Animal Control Facility Annex, Geese Stadium improvements, and various projects for the utilities. And so that was revenue, um, in many cases, we didn't build into the budget, so we're going to make an adjustment to reflect it and any necessary expenses that, uh, it supports. The second category of changes is related to new responsibilities. Um, the city did assume some new responsibilities that we didn't anticipate as part of the, the budget planning. Uh, highlighted are the Pascal Specialty Kitchen, and we do and plan to make some, um, improvements there using ARPA funds, uh, with council's approval, and, uh, the Pascal Farmers Market, uh, the Animal Control Facility. Um, while we have been operating the Animal Control Facility for a little longer than a year, um, we better know the budget level that needs to be sustained to support the facility and operations, and then downtown community events. Uh, the next category is focused initiatives. These are things or, uh, services that the city historically provides and are important for our community, uh, but we've recognized that we need to adjust the budget to make sure that we're, um, supporting that work adequately moving into twenty-twenty-four. And, uh, one source is or instances, the professional services to support community, um, development, uh, efforts and, um, initiatives. And then also the city has taken, uh, through twenty-twenty-three, we've spent a significant amount of our original budget, uh, related to property abatement, and, uh, we want, we need to increase it to continue that effort. Um, and then finally, uh, the city entered a lease agreement with the call, with a golf course operator, and included in that lease agreement was, uh, set aside for capital improvements, and so we just need to fund that set aside. And then the final category is really a made up of a couple different, uh, influences or driving factors. Uh, the overriding theme are either things that we didn't, we had an error and did not include in the budget, or we didn't include sufficient, uh, levels. So I'll work my way through these. Um, police vehicle leases, uh, were, were in the budget at one point in time in the dep, uh, in the process, uh, it moves through many levels, and at some point in time, they were not in the budget anymore. So we want to get that, uh, obviously corrected and in the budget. Uh, inflation is impacting that increase and just the cost is changing from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four by about twenty-four percent. Um, there were vehicle and equipment purchases that the departments, uh, requested and were, were determined not, um, to, the determination was to evaluate them during twenty-twenty-three instead of just, or instead of including them in the original budget. That evaluation has taken place, and so for some of those vehicles, we are requesting to that, that they be added into the budget now. Uh, there are, uh, purchases that were planned and made for vehicles, and inflation and the co, related to the cost of the vehicles was higher than anticipated, so we want to, uh, correct that, uh, reconcile that cost with the budget level. And then, uh, overtime for the ambulance fund, there need, we need to, it was under budget and we need to get that right-sized for the needs of the department. Uh, another area is temporary staffing for, uh, grounds and landscaping, uh, support the, that staffing, uh, supplies maintenance for parks and boulevards, and we need to increase the budget to, uh, allow for that to occur. And, um, oh, that, the set, the next one is just, uh, correction, it's just moving funding from one sports, better, better allocation of expenses, and so the budget's going to follow that allocation, uh, related to services that are actually supplied. Um, and then inflationary-wise, we have electric service costs and fuel costs that just are, uh, larger than in the original budget included, so we want to get those right-sized as well. Um, we have a few items that we sort of started working on that related to software for, um, technology that were, uh, beginning in twenty-twenty-two and budgeted in twenty-twenty-two, but concluded in twenty-twenty-three, so there was no budget in twenty-three. There, that does mean there was less spending in twenty-two, so now we're just going to make sure that we have the budget to support payments that occurred in twenty-twenty-three with your, uh, acceptance. And then finally, uh, category of other adjustments is subsidies. We have a couple areas where the general fund needs, uh, uh, well, well, or other funds need a subsidy for s- supporting operations or different elements of their budget, and I'll walk through those quickly. Um, as you know, a few years ago, we received a section one oh eight loan for construction of Peanuts Park and, uh, through Community Development Block Grant. And it, at this time, has a variable interest rate, which oftentimes, um, in, in past practice, that would not have caused us as much issues, but as it's variable and interest rates have been going up, uh, the, the money that comes from the Community Development Bro, Grant Program to support the, the debt service on that loan is insufficient. So staff is currently taking steps to refinance and get it in a fixed rate so that we can avoid, uh, future instances, uh, where the interest rate is higher than the allocation. Uh, but for now, until we get that changed, we need a subsidy to help pay that debt service. Uh, Senior Center Operations, uh, the Senior Center is its own fund, a special revenue fund, and so it, uh, would, might not surprise people to know that the revenue received by the Senior Center does not offset the expenses, so subsidy helps maintain that service. And then, uh, the Stadium Fund, uh, the subsidy is related to the debt service, uh, on the bonds that we just issued. And, uh, while, uh, I think you, you may recall that we did discuss this, uh, with the, this element of what is the economic benefit of the, uh, Dust Devils, uh, organization, and that it was, uh, significant, but felt throughout the comm- community, not just in the Stadium Fund. And so, uh, it's not measurable in the Stadium Fund while the expenses do stay there. So the General Fund, uh, we are requesting a subsidy to help support that fund. Uh, the next, uh, group of slides is based on the same information that we've just discussed, um, and it's just comparing over the past few bienniums, uh, what the adopted budget has been, and then the amendments that have been requested exclusive of capital. These are related to operations. And the orange, um, section on top of each blue column is the amendment. So you can see, uh, for the most, it's, uh, showing revenues and then expenditures for each biennium. So you can see in the most, the biennium we're in right now, uh, the amendment that we're requesting is smaller as compared to prior years. The other thing of note, um, you, that's included in each of these slides is the growth in, um, full-time equivalent positions. That's partially what has caused that, uh, blue column in the most recent biennium to be larger, and something we want to be cognizant and aware of as we plan for the future, that those costs are ongoing and recurring, and something we need to include, uh, and assess as we, um, evaluate revenue needs, uh, for the coming years. This is the special revenue funds, which, uh, is a lot of funds. It's, uh, activity that collects revenue that can only be used for a special purpose, hence the name. So the Senior Center is one of those funds, uh, Cemetery Ambulance Fund, there's a multitude of them, but this is the same comparison, uh, for the two right-hand columns, that is the biennium revenues and expenditures. And you can see that the request is much smaller than in the past years. And I will note that those middle two columns are especially large amendments because they were related to COVID, um, grants that we received and expenditures. So it's a definitely anom, an anomaly across the bienniums. Utilities, uh, the, there's very little amendment, uh, the, uh, in the utilities, uh, every biennium, and we're thankful for that, uh, they, uh, so there isn't too much here, but we have outlined some that you'll see in a table that I'm working my way toward. And finally, the equipment funds, and these are both operational, um, support and maintenance as in the form of maintenance, and then also a savings account so we can replace vehicles and flatten out those costs instead of them spiking, uh, when, uh, with purchases. Uh, finally, or there, this is a table that has all the amendments outlined by fund so that you can see the revenue amendment, uh, expense amendment, the effect on the ending fund balance, so how much that ending fund balance will be affected by these mid-biennium adjustments, um, and then notes related to the cause, which I've just walked through verbally through with you. I just wanted to have them on here so you could see the dollars outlined with the, the amendment request. Uh, the one I will point out that's not explicit in the, uh, since it's the special revenue fund and they're combined, uh, in, in our discussion before, is that real estate excise tax is one we're very carefully watching. Um, it is definitely an product of the economy and house sales, uh, so we have requested and plan to with council's, um, agreement to reduce the revenue by two million dollars, and we'll watch that carefully as we make future plans for, um, spending out of that fund. All those have been discussed, and so I won't, uh, belabor the point. And then finally, um, the general fund, as, uh, Deputy City Manager Sigdel mentioned, uh, does have a healthy, uh, fund balance, and it will maintain a healthy fund balance in, even in light of these requested amendments. Um, and the, the value of that is, uh, we maintain that fund balance for, to be available for one-time expenditures, uh, in the event of short-term revenue, uh, or shortfalls, um, emergencies that may arise, or transition, uh, in programming, similar to what the budget included when we adopted it earlier this year, things where we know that we need to spend money to set up a program or to complete work, and revenue will follow. Um, and one, one example, uh, is the tax incremental financing, uh, that is proposed, and, uh, when that happens, it's most likely that we'll have debt service, uh, that this general fund will need to pay, and the revenues tied to homes, um, a greater populace providing, uh, sales tax revenue to the city, uh, property tax, and utility tax as those homes and, and commercial businesses are, are, uh, developed and, and, uh, operating. Uh, those revenues will come after some of the expenditures that we've built into this budget now, and, and has been as a focus on, um, one-time spending for future growth. Excuse me. So as we go into, uh, twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six biennium, uh, we are, uh, not concerned about the general fund budget, but also being very cognizant of long-term effects, uh, and needs for the general fund. And part of that analysis will be just looking at the budget for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, and what continues to occur throughout the end of this biennium and into twenty-twenty-four. We also are working on our general fund long-term plan that will have a longer, uh, horizon of ten years to, uh, look at needs for the general fund and revenue sources, and, uh, very carefully evaluate, uh, what steps we should take and, and, uh, make wise choices for the city as a whole. Um, all the funds that I highlighted are fund types, whether it's the general fund, uh, utility funds, special revenue funds, or, uh, the equipment funds have a healthy fund balance, and, um, we are going to, um, carefully evaluate both rates and spending, uh, for the new biennium as we move through twenty-twenty-four. And so with that conclusion, I just want to, um, open up the floor for questions, should you have any.
Thank you. So thank you for the thorough explanation. Thank you, uh, Deputy Direct, Deputy City Manager. Uh, wow, long title. So before I open the public hearing, uh, is there any questions or comments from council, uh, regarding this report? Councilmember Serrano?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, Director Buckley, you mentioned the real estate excise tax, and it sounded like it was a two million dollar adjustment, and you kind of closed by stating that the other funds seem to be on par or, or in good shape. Are there any other funds that we need to be mindful of at this point? Where we might be looking at other downward adjustments or something of that nature that could impact the budget?
None that come, no, none that come to mind. The, in the special revenue funds, there are some very small funds, um, as, well, they have not a lot of capacity for revenue reductions or expense increases. And certainly, for those, um, small impacts could have a, a large, uh, or small changes or missing the mark a little bit, and the budget could have a impact for those funds. Right now, um, other than the funds that we are requesting a subsidy for, those funds that need a subsidy would definitely be ones that, uh, we are going to keep watching and looking where we can make adjustments in both revenues and expenditures, um, to make sure that they are, uh, in good, in good standing moving forward through the, you know, into the new biennium. But biennium... we are not concerned about the general fund budget, but also being very cognizant of long-term effects and needs for the general fund. And part of that analysis will be just looking at the budget for 2025, 2026, and what continues to occur throughout the end of this biennium and into 2024. We also are working on our general fund long-term plan that will have a longer horizon of 10 years to look at needs for the general fund and revenue sources, and very carefully evaluate what steps we should take and, and make wise choices for the city as a whole. All the funds that I highlight are fund types, whether it's the general fund, utility funds, special revenue funds, or the equipment funds have a healthy fund balance. And we are going to carefully evaluate both rates and spending for the new biennium as we move through 2024. And so with that conclusion, I just want to open up the floor for questions, should you have any.
Thank you. So thank you for the thorough explanation. Thank you, Deputy Direct, Deputy City Manager. Wow, long title. So before I open the public hearing, is there any questions or comments from council regarding this report? Councilwoman Serrana?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Director Buckley, you mentioned the real estate excise tax. It sounded like it was a $2 million adjustment, and you kind of closed by stating that the other funds seem to be on par or in good shape. Are there any other funds that we need to be mindful of at this point? Where we might be looking at other downward adjustments or something of that nature that could impact the budget?
None that come, no, none that come to mind. In the special revenue funds, there are some very small funds. As, well, they have not a lot of capacity for revenue reductions or expense increases. And certainly, for those, small impacts could have a large, or small changes are missing the mark a little bit, and the budget could have an impact for those funds. Right now, other than the funds that we are requesting a subsidy for, those funds that need a subsidy would definitely be ones that we are going to keep watching and looking where we can make adjustments in both revenues and expenditures to make sure that they are in good, in good standing moving forward through the, you know, into the new biennium. But by and large, those are the only ones that stand out in my mind of having concerns.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then just a second question. So our total, I think EFD standard for any fund, effective end funds balance was just shy of nine and a half million dollars. You know, obviously, we have a biennial budget. We adopt it and then anticipate revenues to come in in a specific way. Do you foresee that as problematic, as potentially carrying over into our future biennial budget for the next two years?
Well, it's hard to know. It's hard to know what the economy will, will provide, or, you know, what the impacts of the economy will be moving forward. We have relied heavily on sales tax over the past few years. You know, our budget is made up for the general fund about a third, a third, a third. That's not really quite right, and I can't remember the percentage. But sales taxes, I can say this for sure, sales tax is the highest revenue for the general fund. And then utility tax, and then property tax. And so with that reliance on sales tax, since it is variable, it does cause some concern. But, and, and we've had construction sales taxes been very impactful over the past few years. We, I mentioned last month or last week that we still, when we did calculate or create the adopted budget, we looked at known large-scale projects that would provide sales tax, and many of those have not been completed yet in this biennium. So we haven't seen that revenue yet, and as long as they continue, then we anticipate that revenue will, will be strong. But we will need to very cautiously move into the 25, 26 biennium and, and kind of be more aware of the economy, what things are one-time revenues and what things are ongoing revenues to, and where we best support those, you know, match those ongoing revenues and ongoing expenses with one-time revenues and one-time expenses. And then also that general fund long-term plan will, the benefit of that is, there's many benefits, but one is that it has that long-term horizon, not just a couple of years. And so we'll make various assumptions as part of that process, look at all the different departments that affect the general fund and, and their needs, and, and then we will be able to communicate well back to council based on what we're seeing, you know, here in Pasco, and also in the economy and our future planning.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Roach, do you have a question, comment?
I do. I have a question for you.
Understood.
Utility funds, do those support into the general fund?
They do not. The, that is the, the beauty and the purpose of fund accounting is that each fund is self-supporting, meaning that it all has its own accounting records. And so when we set rates for the utilities, that's based on the revenues and the expenses of the utilities. And property taxes do not fund the utilities, and utility rates do not fund anything but their individual utility.
Considering a review of the utility funds, if you could just explain to me and everybody else here, utility funds, is the city allowed to make a profit off of utility funds as a revenue? Or does it, is it, I'll let you finish that.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm glad to answer that. Thank you for the opportunity. We, we do not make a profit. We, from about every three years, sometimes a little longer, sometimes less. It depends on the activity happening and what we know future expenses are for the utilities. But we do a revenue requirement study. And so in those studies, and we, we perform that work with a third party that, that is their specialty. And in those studies, we give them operating budgets and capital planning budgets, and then worked line by line through what we think will happen and the needs will be over the next few years, accompanied by assumptions that they, as those, with that specialty have too, about increase, anticipated increases in fuel or construction costs, different elements, so that we make sure that we set rates appropriately. And then when those rates are set, all the revenues come back into the fund. If, if there was a case where, for some reason, we projected expenses were going to be a certain... Thank you. If we projected that expenditures were going to be a little bit, were going to be at a certain level, and they were lower, the rates still would come into that given utility fund and would stay there in their fund balance to be used for capital spending or, or different items that are just for that fund. So just that utility, I should say.
Thank you. I appreciate that. My mic is off now. I'm trying to avoid the popcorn sound. So as some of these outlined considerations that you have here, running out of ARPA funding, Safer Grant, and then the ARPA funding for the Resource Navigator, I think my comment would just simply be for director-level staff that city council members such as myself would love for you to continue to pursue grant opportunities. We had the awareness that those money, monies would run out. It's not that we don't know that, but we still would love for that to come from other places, state, federal, wherever you can find them.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, this public hearing is now open for comment. So I would invite anyone from chambers. If you wish to make a comment on this particular item, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and your comment. Second call for public comment on this particular item. Third and final call. Hearing none, this public hearing is closed, and I would invite Mayor Porton Brown for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4696, amending the 2023, 2024 biennial operating budget by providing supplement thereto by appropriating revenue received in excesses of estimated revenues for the current biennial by and by providing transfers and adjustment authority and further authorize publication by title.
There's a motion. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Blaisdell. Can I get a roll call vote on this?
Councilmember?
Yes. I hear crackling again. Did I hear my name? I'll just assume that's me, yes.
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
That is yes. Thank you. That's unanimous. And before we move on to our next item on the agenda, because we do continue to have technical issues, we'll be taking another five-minute break till we get this resolved, to return shortly, 8:05. All right, we are back from our little break. Apologies again for the technical difficulties that we're going through, but we will get past this. Going back, we are at item number five, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings, ordinance number 4698 and 4699, the 2024 Administrative Professional Wage and Management Salary Plans. And I will turn it over to Deputy City Manager Sigil.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and evening, council. The agenda in front of you is another annual ritual of wage plan for non-represented and management group of employees. The city has four represented groups or unions that make up majority of the city's employees, but we also have this group of non-represented and management groups. Contracts with unions or bargaining units are negotiated as their contracts come, are, are expired, and council approves their cost of living adjustments and any adjustments to their wage scale and bargaining language as those details are getting negotiated, or those contracts are getting negotiated. For our non-represented and management staff, we go through this annual process tonight where we ask council for your recommendation and approval on cost of living adjustments as well as adjustments to salary scales. The impact of what is being recommended today is about $900,000 for all of the non-represented and management team at the city. And the request is a 4% cost of living increase and 1% increase to the deferred compensation benefit, which is also commonly known as 401K. The, the deferred compensation is something that the city had not offered prior to 2021 and was a benefit that is available to most of our comparable cities. So the city council embarked upon adding this benefit and with, with the intention of slowly increasing that compensation, the deferred compensation contribution over time. So you're looking at the fourth year, if council approves, which would get it to a 4% contribution, which would make us in par with most of our comparable cities. The cost of living adjustment is usually something that we tie very closely to CPI. And as everyone knows, inflation has been quite high in the last couple of years. Last year, inflation for the period was 8.28%, and council approved 5% of cost of living adjustment for staff. This year, the CPI has been 3.2%, and we're recommending 4% as a cost of living adjustment. So we're ensuring that we're not falling behind with, with the market overall. As we also approve new bargaining agreements, which we did one recently, there are challenges with compression, wage compression, especially between the same reporting hierarchies, especially if there's a bargaining unit and then you have management over that. There's issues with compressions, wage compression, as well as internal equity as well. And so that requires us to sometimes change our wage scales and, and make sure that that parity is, is there, that, that inequity does not exist. And we do our best Uh, and we do our best, uh, looking, uh, at all of our, uh, positions and ensuring that there's as little inequity there as possible. Uh, it is not always possible to look at every aspect, um, and every, uh, job classification. Um, and we are in the process of doing a comprehensive salary study, uh, with Baker Tilly, um, and hiring somebody to kind of really look at it and compare us to other jurisdictions, other comparable cities. Um, so we'll be coming to council with that, um, later in the, in the next year. Uh, but we do what is in front of you, uh, council today, uh, is a recommended four percent cost of living adjustment and additional one percent, uh, contribution to the deferred comp. And the wage scale has some adjustments to manage the wage compression and internal equity. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm, I'm open to that.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy City Manager Sigda, it's my microphone. Um, and with that, I'll open it for any questions or comments. Um, Councilwoman Roach.
Deputy City Manager, um, Sigda, I think my only comment in listening to, uh, your summary is that hopefully as the city, um, gains more staffing and the HR department also gains more staffing there as well, that some of these, uh, compensation studies can be done in-house as opposed to, um, done through consulting, cause that takes more funding to do so. So that's my two cents on that and otherwise I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Roach, uh, Councilman Serrano, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, just one question. Uh, Deputy Director Sigda, if I understood what you said, uh, part of this is raising the cost to be kind of, uh, on par with other jurisdictions. Did you all do a sample study of either across the river or, you know, throughout the east side of the state or other sized municipalities, no matter where in the state, um, to make sure that we were looking at the same or similar COLA adjustment?
Uh, yes, we did. Uh, we definitely looked at our neighboring jurisdictions, uh, since they are our most, uh, direct comparables. Uh, and with the salary study, we will be looking at even a larger, uh, set of data, um, to make sure that we are, uh, uh, we have our, uh, wage scales where they should be.
Okay, and I guess my directly, was their COLA around four percent as is ours?
Uh, so we, we have a little bit of a different process than, um, than, than the neighboring cities, uh, where, uh, especially for our represent, uh, management staff, uh, there is not a cost of living adjustment, but, uh, different, uh, salary bands where your performance, um, metric and your, um, um, cost of living adjustment is combined. So it is not quite apples to apples comparison. So unfortunately I, I cannot quite answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, uh, Mayor Pretemperon, can I get a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four-six-nine-eight, providing for certain adjustments in the administrative-slash-professional exempt and non-exempt wage plan beginning January seventh of twenty-twenty-four. First full, first full pay period of twenty-twenty-four and further authorized publication by summary only.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Roach. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I think I captured your aye, Councilman Serrano?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
And it passes unanimously, thank you. Can we get the second motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four-six-nine-nine, providing for certain adjustments in the management salary plan beginning January seventh, twenty-twenty-four, first full pay period of twenty-twenty-four and further authorized publication by summary only.
I have a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Roach. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? And again, it passes unanimously, thank you for that. But that will go on to the next item on the agenda, ordinance number four-seven-zero-zero, amending PNC Title Twenty-five zoning related to residential design standards. And I'll direct that to, uh, Director Gonzalez.
Uh, good evening Mayor and members of council. Uh, this is an item that's been before, uh, council, uh, several times, uh, uh, latest was in, um, uh, July and in August of this past year. Um, and essentially what this is, is staff's follow-up effort associated with, uh, increasing, uh, residential building capacity, um, and, uh, residential building flexibility, um, and a phase one approach, kind of identifying the immediate actions that needed to be taken. Um, I, I do want to call out that, um, while this effort was initiated with the help of, um, uh, initiated by the help of, uh, several of our development and building stakeholders, particularly, um, from the Home Builders Association of the Tri-Cities. So I do want to call out the, uh, the initiation from that body. Uh, but essentially what this effort is intended to achieve is to respond to, uh, public input, stakeholder input, um, offer a variety of housing choices and housing options for our residents, uh, promote a variety in site and building design, um, objective, uh, building design and again streamlining, um, our permitting, uh, and a review process through the use of those objective standards and, and essentially simplifying, um, our zoning structure. Um, starting with the community input, this dates back well before twenty-twenty, but in the most recent available twenty-twenty national community survey, there were several questions, um, asked about, um, uh, how residents felt regarding, uh, housing and density and zoning, et cetera. And there was overwhelming support for, uh, housing incentives, roughly, uh, seventy years, seventy or so percent, uh, for, uh, encouraging the city to pursue housing incentives. Uh, similarly on the zoning initiatives, uh, to increase supply, uh, there was, uh, well over fifty percent of, uh, of residents supported, uh, cities, uh, effort, the city effort to pursue zoning, uh, initiatives to increase supply, which this would qualify under. And then there was a question regarding let the market decide and, and again, there was an overwhelming support, um, for that option as well. It, really the only one that staff hasn't been able to move forward yet, um, which will happen with the adoption of the housing plan, uh, is the housing incentives. But the design standards that are before, uh, council this evening certainly, um, align with both, um, the second and the third pie charts there. Um, in, uh, twenty-twenty, uh, associated with the, uh, residential building capacity effort, this is House Bill nineteen-twenty-three that, uh, council adopted. Uh, city staff also reached out, uh, and did a smaller survey just for our housing developers, stakeholders, realtors, et cetera, and asked for their input. Um, and, uh, they had provided that, um, housing prices, uh, were, were forcing residents to seek, um, home, uh, ownership opportunities outside of Pasco and renter, renter opportunities outside of Pasco. Um, and, and nearly a hundred percent, ninety-five percent to be exact, had, um, shared that more housing options were needed in Pasco with a strong support for attached single families. So that's sort of that missing middle, um, term that's been thrown around a lot lately. So those are duplexes, triplexes, small town homes, et cetera. And then as part of our, uh, Housing and Action and Implementation Plan, which was adopted, uh, just a couple of weeks ago from council, um, city staff, along with the help of several, uh, city departments, notably the Parks and Recreation Department, um, had reached out to, uh, over nine hundred community members, um, and asked for their input on how the city could best achieve, uh, more housing, uh, options and housing affordability. And, uh, sixty-two percent of the, uh, uh, survey responses had indicated that, uh, there needs to be more housing options in Pasco. Um, sixty-eight percent had shared that Pasco needs more moderately priced, uh, housing options. An interesting response we received was that, um, nearly eight out of ten responses had shared that they had previously lived in an apartment or had been renters at some point during their housing experience. And when we asked about what the barriers were for their current housing situations or for their next step regarding their housing choices, uh, both the cost and the lack of availability or housing or limited options were, um, shared as the, uh, barriers for that. So, um, getting back to this proposal in terms of the essential critical modifications, um, there's three, uh, photos, uh, illustrations on the screen that are, uh, intended to illustrate really what the design standards are attempting to do, which was, um, to get at the, really the nuts and bolts, the details of what the zoning code actually administers, which is, um, the lot width, lot dimensions, lot coverage setbacks, um, uh, site building design standards where access can be located, where driveways can't be located, the width of driveways, et cetera. So it, it's quite a substantial effort, um, one that hasn't been undertaken in quite some time, but these tools, uh, in the zoning code, which is Title Twenty-five of the Past Municipal Code, are the actual tools, uh, tools that are utilized by our development community who are trying to provide housing and administered by staff to, uh, facilitate these projects through the development. So, uh, by attempting to address the, uh, zoning code, um, it is staff's, uh, intent of implementing the comprehensive plan by modifying the zoning code, um, which the design standards live in. So, uh, on the next slide, uh, is, uh, the next several slides, uh, will cover some of the key, um, initiatives associated with this design standards update and the first one being the minimum lot size. And what you see here is a drastic simplification, um, that staff is proposing, uh, where we, instead of breaking out every single home type, which at this point there's too many new home types to kind of categorize at this point, it, it really is breaking it down into the, the four main categories of your typical single-family detached, uh, home, your single-family attached, which could be a townhome, a duplex, a triplex, which kind of live in the middle, and then, uh, those apartments and multi, uh, family units that are essentially four or more units. And, uh, what staff is proposing is a, uh, decrease of minimum lot size, um, for, uh, most of the R-one, R-two, R-three and R-four zoning districts. I, I do want to be, uh, I do want to clarify that this design standards update does not apply and will not impact or affect, uh, the RS-twenty or the RS-twelve zoning districts, um, or the R-one alternative districts that are also, um, currently, uh, within the zoning, uh, toolbox. Uh, those are not impacted, staff is, does not intend, uh, th- those are not a part of this effort. So this is simply for R-one, R-two and R-three and R-four. And, um, the minimum lot sizes you see here are, are a collaboration in terms of what we've seen in other communities that have really, um, increased housing supply, um, and also are the results of the feedback, um, and the initiation received from the, uh, Home Builders Association of the Tri-Cities. Um, and so what we, uh, believe here, it allows for more flexibility. Again, these are the minimum lot sizes, but as you'll see in the follow-up slides, when you account for the setback requirements, the off-street parking requirements, lot coverage requirements, open access requirements, et cetera, and, and certainly the, the footprint of whatever the option is for the home type, that minimum lot size, it grows and grows and grows. So on the next slide, um, is the minimum site frontage and width. Currently, this municipal code uses two different numerical points or measurements for both, uh, measurement for frontage and a measurement for width. Um, uh, sort of an obsolete practice, so staff is proposing to just combine them into a minimum site frontage and width based again, based again on those simplified housing types of, uh, single-family detached, attached, duplex, triplex, et cetera. Uh, in particular here, there is a, uh, decrease proposed on the single-family detached, um, on the R-one and the, uh, the R-one zoning district. And then, uh, one that we believe will be, uh, beneficial for multifamily units is, uh, simplifying that to a minimum of, uh, forty feet, but dependent, um, on the off-street parking requirements, the setback requirements, et cetera. It's not likely that you will ever see a multifamily unit on a forty-foot minimum frontage, but it does provide for some options in case there's a new housing type that comes out. Part of this effort was to try to future-proof, um, the zoning code as much as we could, uh, to prevent us from having to deny projects or not be able to facilitate projects because of, of an outdated zoning structure. And, and again, the staff received, um, recommendations from our housing stakeholders on, uh, this element as well. Next is, uh, the setback requirements. Um, so this is the, uh, distance between the, uh, property line and the building line or the home footprint. And the, uh, the biggest change here, uh, would be the reduction on the rear, um, a setback which is being proposed as fifteen feet. This aligns, uh, with the City of Kennewick's current requirements. Um, it'd also help alleviate some of the challenges that some of our newer developments are facing where the current requirement is that the rear setback is equal to the dwelling height. So if you have a thirty-foot, um, single-family detached home, you need a thirty-foot rear setback. It's kind of an odd one-size-fits-all approach, um, whereas here the minimum is fifteen feet, but if you'd like twenty feet or if the subdivision is, is, uh, providing for a different, uh, lot types, lot dimensions, they can go above that. And, uh, here's, um, uh, a slide illustrating both the height and lot coverage. There is no changes proposed to height, so this is simply just the lot coverage. And, uh, the change here would be for the R-one and R-two zoning districts where staff is proposing that these be increased from forty and forty-five percent to just a straight sixty percent. This one in particular has received a lot of support from our development and realtor community. In fact, there's several pending, um, final plats that are anticipating, um, a favorable, uh, decision regarding this item tonight. What this allows is for a bigger home to be on a smaller lot, still considering that there will be open space requirements associated with each lot. But this one in particular, along with the setbacks and the lot size, uh, reductions, uh, or in this case, increase for lot coverage have been, um, one of the key sticking points that the stakeholders have asked staff to, to tackle. And, uh, certainly wanted to make sure that we address both the, uh, off-street parking and accessibility for, um, uh, the, the, the design standards. Um, staff is proposing that a reduction, uh, for off-street parking from two to one be, uh, the requirement for, um, homes with either studio or one-bedroom, uh, one-bedroom units. In particular, that will help with, um, more flexibility for multifamily development. And then on the location of that off-street parking, currently there is a requirement that is, is fairly restrictive where parking is not allowed to be along the frontage. Um, and so what staff is proposing is that there would be an increase in the allowed parking to be located along that frontage, um, with some parameters about how much and the length of that as well. Um, the provision of screening and landscaping could be zero-scaping. We currently allow zero-scaping, so it could certainly be zero-scaping, um, to be that, uh, screening standard along with, um, uh, requirement that these parking areas shall be designed to incorporate incremental breaks based on how the, um, uh, each development feels is appropriate to provide the, uh, necessary access to and through, um, other site for both vehicles and, and non-motorized users. And, uh, more so on the pedestrian access and circulation, these are items that are outright, uh, most of them already requirements, but they weren't clarified in the design standards. So this would include, um, items such as provisions for best rate, pedestrian and bicycle access within and onto the site. Most developments, if not all of the newer ones already have this, this just clearly calls it out. Um, the provision for walkways, uh, to, uh, provide onsite circulation, um, and then certainly conformance with ADA design standards. These, these are things that are rea- are requirements, but they do not live, um, uh, from staff's, um, uh, per se, staff's, uh, opinion in the right location of municipal code. And, uh, wanted to, uh, share with council just a few considerations noting the, the fairly substantial change that staff is proposing with the help of our stakeholders here is that, uh, first is, is that this is the first comprehensive update to our zoning code since nineteen-seventy. There's been several, uh, revisions to our zoning code. In fact, in the early two thousands, between twenty-ten and twenty-sixteen or seventeen, um, there were actually several changes to zoning code that added, um, uh, uh, that, I, I guess would say decrease of flexibility. So there was an increase in the lot size or was increase in setbacks, um, which, um, I think the best practices and research has shown have been a part of the reason there's such a, a housing crisis that costs the country today, fairly restrictive zoning, um, code. So this is the first update since nineteen-seventy and, and as we all know, the world's changed a little bit over the last fifty or so years. The densities are still controlled by the council adopted comprehensive plan, future land use, um, classification. So the low density, the medium density, the high density, density thresholds, the minimums and the maximums, those are now, um, uh, uh, clearly, um, di- identified and codified in the past municipal code. Uh, council adopted an ordinance last spring that codified those thresholds. And what this allows us to do is consistently refer to the city's major planning document, the comprehensive plan as the guide for densities across the city. So. Guide for densities across the city, so. The proposed residential design standards allow for more options, they allow for more diversity of housing and allow for more density. They still mu- must be in conformance with the council adopted comprehensive plan. And along those lines, um, staff um believes that the increased flexibility is well balanced with the uh. Requirements and provisions for open space, uh lot coverage and access requirements and um. A a big one as well is with the recent state action on housing. Um, one of the things that staff will be uh submitting to the Department of Commerce. Um, in uh twenty twenty four, um, would be that with the um. Successful adoption of this zoning code, uh, that we would be exempt from HB eleven one zero and what's um, if I think. Practical about that is that this effort was designed with several stakeholders and community. Uh, member input, so it's tailored very much to the city of Pasco for today and very much for the future. Um, and that should be sort of the overarching, the uh, the zoning code that we should follow at the city based on our own process versus. When that's sort of a one size fits all approach. Uh, a little bit more about context in in terms of future housing needs, these are uh topics that came out during the housing action plan, but. Um, by the year twenty forty five, Pasco will be home to more than a hundred and forty thousand residents and uh. That means between uh now and then that uh we will need more than twenty-three thousand more homes. In the city to accommodate that growth. Um, right now, a study from the Department of Commerce had indicated that uh city of Pasco is. Um, a short um seventeen hundred homes. So those twenty-three thousand units include that that undersupply, but um, we're gonna need a lot more housing. Uh, to accommodate um both uh the the residents that are here today and the residents that'll call Pasco home in the future. Uh, this chart illustrates uh the uh historic production of housing units by decade. Um, and the uh population growth by decade and it dates back to nineteen forties and what you can see obviously is a substantial population growth. Uh, since nineteen ninety through now, and that is likely going to continue for the foreseeable future. And and generally what is, what we see in the trends is just a mismatch between the growth of housing units. And uh the growth of the population. And um, if you throw on the recent uh economic success in terms of the job growth that the city is experiencing. That housing underproduction becomes more drastic. Uh, because that is uh uh another sort of metric that is important to take note of is the increase of housing units and job growth. Um, there's also a mismatch between that as well. Um, this uh proposal has uh been developed under the guidance of um. Uh, council in terms of the uh, uh, council goals, the comprehensive plan, uh, land use and housing elements. Along with the recently adopted uh housing action implementation plan, which strategy number one. Um, which was identified by the stakeholders uh was to remove regulatory barriers and encourage the development of variety of housing. In many instances, staff was um finding themselves in situations where during the staff review process. We were either having to deny certain projects or um having difficult times justifying our current code. Based on the current needs of the community in terms of housing. And um, we believe that this proposal, while certainly phase one and not perfect, uh begins to address that sufficiently. Um, this proposal, um, as shared earlier, has received uh has received um support from many of our our stakeholder groups. It was uh initiated with the help of our partners at the uh Home Builders Association, the Tri-Cities and the Association. Of uh Tri- the Tri-City Association Realtors, but I really also wanna call out um. Uh, the community members and organizations and agencies that um have been a part of and will remain a part of our ongoing housing. Stakeholder uh workshop group which comprised of uh several organizations, nonprofits, et cetera. Uh, United Way of Benton Franklin County um has submitted a letter of support that's in the uh agenda packet. Uh, we heard uh earlier from uh Jet Richardson from the uh Habitat Humanity of our region. Uh, Benton Franklin uh Transit, uh, the Benton Franklin uh, uh, Health District. And several others were a part of the housing stakeholder group, so this effort was was fairly exciting because we actually got to take action during the. Development process of that plan, so uh really proud of being able to accommodate all their input in this effort. And um, that concludes uh this presentation, I I do wanna call out that. Um, while these changes do uh may be perceived as um. Fairly significant and and they are to the extent of the intended benefit that. Um, the last four years, uh, the median sale price for homes in Pasco has increased over fifty-five percent. Um, you've uh seen the slides about the amount of housing needed. Uh, what is really exciting though is even what the modest changes made to date, uh, we are finally starting to see the results of those changes. With moderately priced homes, in fact, if you go on Zillow right now, you will see homes that are not yet uh complete. But are intending uh are intended to be uh sold at uh the mid three fifty range. Uh, which we have not seen since quarter one of twenty twenty. Um, and then lastly, um, it would be difficult for me not to bring up that in uh September of twenty nineteen, I stood before. Uh, council at that time, uh, with a staff recommendation for two resolutions, one to pursue. Uh, uh, funding for affordable housing and one to propose, one to pursue. The uh House Bill nineteen twenty-three effort, and at that time we were asked by. Uh, former mayor Matt Watkins, if staff was confident that the path we were taking was the right path. Um, and I think a little bit more than four years later, I think staff is more than confident that the the city of Pasco uh is and will remain a leader. Um, across um the state in ensuring that our residents who are interested or who would like to remain in Pasco have a. Home choice to do so, so happy to answer any questions and uh thank you for your time this evening, thank you.
Director Gonzalez, it's it's great to hear that we're gonna have more opportunities. Um, within the community for those individuals that are ready to take the next step. Um, out of living in in apartments and buying their first home. It's it's great to hear that the barriers are are gonna be reduced, if not eliminated. Uh, for that opportunity, um, so again, thank you. With that, I'll open it for council, if there's any questions or comments uh on this item. Hearing none, uh Mayor Protem Brown, can I get a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four seven zero zero amendments. Amending certain sections in chapters two five point one five. Two five point four five, two five point six zero. Two five point six five, two five point seven zero. Two five point one six five, two five point one seven zero. Two five point one seven five and two five point one eight five. Repealing section two five point one six five point one zero zero. Entitled residential design standards and creating a new chapter two five point two two. Entitled Zone District Standards, all within title twenty-five zoning of the Pasco. Municipal code to increase housing choices and improve the quality of built environment in Pasco. Residents and further authorize publication by title only.
Thank you, before I open the mo- uh, for a second on this motion, I'd like to correct, on my agenda, it says. Two five point one seven zero point zero three zero. Is that what it shows? That was the previous version, so you have the correct one. Okay, thank you for the clarification, so we do have a motion on the table, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman, Councilwoman Blaisdell, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes unanimously, thank you. With that, we move on to the next item on the agenda, ordinance number forty-seven zero one, amending Pasco municipal code sections three point three five. Point one six zero and thirteen point four five point zero six zero, related to water rights acquisition fee.
Actually, Mayor, before we get into this, I'd like the motion that we table this discussion. I know uh Mister Ferguson's indicated historically that he wants a date, so I'd set it as no later than the first meeting. Uh, first workshop meeting in February. Primarily, uh, my purpose here is to is is two of our councilmen elect have expressed concerns about this raise. And my concern is, we do this, we undertake this action now and. We might be seeing this right in front of us within the first two or three meetings. So I will make a motion to table this till a further date, no later than the first workshop in February.
Thank you for that, uh, Mister Ferguson, clarification, we have a motion on on the floor.
Sounds like the motion is to table, uh, it would be uh, in order to be legally sufficient, it needs to be tabled to a date certain, which would be the second. I I believe uh, uh, council member Serrano is is indicating that he would like to table that to the second workshop in February, is that correct, council member?
Uh, my suggestion was no later than the first workshop, I guess, uh, to the extent that staff could give me. I mean, I, what I don't wanna do is place this on a specific agenda, have staff already have it planned out, if that's not the case, let's just direct, address it. Um, in that first workshop in February.
Okay, yeah, so I think the the motion, correct me if I'm wrong, but the motion is to um, uh, to table the matter until the first workshop in February.
Correct.
Okay.
So there's a motion to table to the first workshop. Um, so it was seconded by Councilman uh Milney. And I will call for a roll call vote on this one.
Madam Mayor, we have discussion.
We can open for discussion. Do you wanna start the discussion?
Sure, um, I think that while the. Point is well taken, you know, several of those council members elect aren't in the audience tonight. Uh, to even address this, um, on top of that. One of the other council members elect had come up and initially has expressed concern. And after hearing staff's recommendation and seeing some more of the work they've done, he came in front of us last week. It's the last week, uh, forgive me if I'm out there, but then spoke in support of this because he saw the work that went into it. And understands where we're coming from, I think, again, I think the point is well received, but. You know, w- we're the ones who have been providing the feedback and input on this and um. I won't be in support of voting for this.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, thank you, uh, Councilman Campos, I appreciate your comment on that, um, yes, um. I'll refrain my comment to, um, to agree with what you said. Um, so there's been a motion and seconded, we have comments, seeing that there's no further comment, um, can I get a roll call vote? Okay, uh, Councilmember Blaisdell. Milney. Roach. Serrano.
Yes.
Campos.
No.
Mayor Protem Brown. And Mayor Brajas.
No.
It is defeated.
Thank you, so we'll move forward. We do have a um. Ordnance number forty-seven zero one, amending Pasco municipal code sections three point three five point one six zero. And thirteen point four five point zero six zero, related to water rights acquisition fee and I'll. Uh, turn it over to Director Worley for a report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, one item I probably should should correct is that there is one other section, it's in the motion, but it's not in the subject of the agenda report. Section thirteen point one five point oh three oh, and that was my fault for not getting it in the title. Uh, it is in the motion if we decide to go that route. So to begin with, um, I'd like to mention that uh staff gave a presentation on this issue back on October eleventh in twenty twenty-three. Uh, just last month, and as a result of that meeting, uh. Staff put out notification to the development community and asked developers to meet us here in council chambers on October twenty-third. To have a discussion about this issue. And there, it was a good discussion, uh, uh, Community Economic Development Director and City Engineer were there. Helping answer questions related to development, water rights, all that kinda stuff, it was great. There were five takeaways from that meeting that are listed in your agenda report. Um, of those five takeaways, about two and a half of those are being addressed. In the code amendments that we're talking about tonight. Uh, the first item is that the the majority of folks who were. In attendance at the developer meeting agreed that the market rate for the water rights acquisition fee. Uh, should be applicable to our code, uh, they agreed that, you know. Uh, it should increase from the seventeen twenty-five, that was currently in the code, to the forty-one fifty, which represents the market rate. The second idea that was presented, the takeaway and that was supported. Was the transfer of required water rights instead of allowing the in lieu fee. For water rights that have been on properties within the last ten years. So it was a recognition that we wanted to try to. Encourage people not to remove their water rights from their property and then come to the city to develop it. And ask to be connected to the water system without applying for water rights. Uh, the third issue that what is addressed uh partially in this code amendment proposal. Is the fifty percent surcharge, we had a good discussion about that. And what we came away with is that. We would not apply the fifty percent sur- surcharge to everybody. It would only apply to those properties that have had water rights on their properties within the last ten years. And then removed them. So if somebody comes in with no water rights, but they had water rights on them within the ten years, the acquisition fee that they pay would be fifty percent greater. And the idea there is to discourage people from removing their water rights from their properties and then coming to the city and paying. A lower fee for the in lieu fee. So we really are trying to encourage people just to transfer the water rights that are needed to develop their property. Um, so those are the three items that are addressed in the uh proposed. Uh, ordinance that you have before you, uh, the first uh, uh, item is that the fee schedule. In uh PMC chapter three thirty-five point one six oh was changed. To take out the fifty percent surcharge that we proposed last time, so now you'll see that it is just the market rate. Uh, based on the market rate, and the second is we added PMC thirteen point. We added a change to PMC thirteen point one five point oh three oh. We added a paragraph in there that specifically relates to the issue of applying the surcharge for properties. That had water rights on it within the last ten years, but no longer has it. So that's, that's where that extra PMC uh reference is is needed. Uh, the third item is um PMC thirteen forty-five oh six oh, where we removed the requirement. To sell the remaining water rights to the city. It was felt that while we are requiring the water rights to be transferred to the city. For the development that's being proposed, we didn't think it was right to force property owners to sell the city the rest of their water rights if they didn't want to. We would love it if they would, if we were given the opportunity, but we don't feel like we should require them to do so. So we are uh making that change in this portion of the code, so. In summary, what we're proposing is if a property has water rights, transfer them to the city. And you pay no fee. If there is no water rights on the property and hasn't been for many, many years, you pay the fee. And if you have no water rights, but you did have it within the past ten years, you pay the water rights fee plus a fifty percent surcharge. That's it, pretty basic. And so there was a comment that was put into the agenda report about the amount of water rights that are currently available. For future development and. That number varies depending on the type of development, whether it's multifamily, single family, all that kinda stuff, so the numbers can change. Depending on the development, but we can tell you that uh if there's anywhere between fifteen hundred acre feet. And eleven hundred and eighty acre feet of available water rights, which is about what we think we have. Uh, given our balance sheet right now, we could probably get anywhere from three thousand to four thousand. Quarter acre lots served with the water rights we have available to us. Now I say that and wh- what we said in the agenda report is that in the queue right now. For development review are over two thousand new homes, new dwelling units. And so that's what we mean, there's a demand for housing. There's not as much water rights available for what's in the queue, plus all of the developments that. There's not as much water rights available for what's in the queue, plus all of the developments that come in after that. I think you saw Director Gonzalez, uh, put up a slide that showed we are needing twenty-three thousand housing units in the next twenty years. And so you can kind of see where we're coming from in terms of, uh, trying to get as many water rights of, to, uh, serve the new developments. So with that information, I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Worley. I appreciate the clarification. Uh, Councilwoman Roach, do you have some comments?
I do. I have a question for Director Worley. Um, how, it seems like you have a, uh, staff have a, uh, idea of wh, what parcels and what square footage or amount of, uh, water rights exist within the city. Um, what's the plan to communicate these amended code changes to those water right owners with the intended objective of please come to us first or sell those water rights to us first?
I think what we'll do is we'll work with, uh, Community Economic Development, and we'll figure out a way to get the word out to everybody that this is the new code change. Um, we can certainly do that. I think we got the message out to invite them to the meeting we had on October twenty-third. So, uh, we can use that same method, uh, to get the word out to them. And, uh, I think a lot of them are aware of it, uh, because they came and some of them are supportive of it, like you saw a week or two ago. Um, and so, uh, we will figure out a way to get the word out.
Okay, thank you. Milney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Worley, for the presentation. I do appreciate, uh, you changed some things on that. Uh, sounds like you listened to the community. My question was, yeah, I know you said you had one meeting. Is that normal, or do you guys normally have like a couple of meetings? I mean, it seems like this has moved along very quickly. Um, can you kind of give me a little process why only one meeting, not, you know, two or three, because, you know, certain people are gone? Um, you know, what, what is the problem about delaying this till February, or, or why, why do you think it needs to be done so quickly, put it that way?
I think there is no formal process or total number that needs to be had. Um, we heard comments from council, and, and we thought it was a great idea to make sure that we involve the development community. Uh, I do know that once the message went out, there were folks who were not able to come to the meeting, but they reached out to me individually, and I was able to share with them. They also shared their thoughts on it, and I shared that at the meeting as well, and so, uh, any of them could have gotten ahold of me at any time to ask questions about what was being proposed. Um, I kind of get the feeling, and I could be wrong, but, you know, developers tend to pay more attention to what's going on at the council level than your average citizen, because a lot of what they do either comes to the hearing examiner or comes to council for final approval. So I, I felt like we, you know, tried to get as much word out there as we could. Um, the reason that we are pushing to get the code changed as soon as possible is just the fact that there are projects that are in the queue that could get in under the current low fee that would not provide sufficient revenue then for the city to then turn around and go purchase the necessary water rights to serve that development in an equal amount. So the idea is to, you know, grab, um, increase the fee to match the market rate now rather than what, but that, that's up to council to decide.
I appreciate the good response. Uh, again, I am for all this. I just, sometimes, you know, you like to see things really flushed out. You like to see that everybody's happy on board. I do understand that we're on a time delay, and again, for water rights now versus, uh, later, I just like to have, you know, more people on board versus this going through so quickly, so, um, right now, you know, but I do agree that what we're doing is a good thing, and, uh, I do appreciate your staff work on this.
Thank you for that comment. Uh, Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of observations. Uh, Director Worley, again, thank you for your hard work on this. I know that you have acted a lot as a liaison. You made yourself available, um, for multiple projects as long as I've sat in this seat, um, including the Process Water Reuse Facility. You're very easy to get ahold of. People know your phone number, and I, I'm sure your team reached out and made yourself available, and so I just, you know, more often than not, um, I hear this come up about developers not being included, and I, I'm, I'm inclined to lean towards, you know, we're not giving preferential treatment to any one person, and again, we're opening the things up. You've made yourself available. In my mind, we've done what we need to do, understanding the timeline-wise in terms of if we wait, the rate could be higher, so if we lock in now, we're setting ourselves up for better success. I, I can appreciate that. Um, and then the other, other side of this, not necessarily related to this specifically, but just a general comment, I just feel like we, as a council, have heard a lot of comments about, um, how we want to make it so we can keep up with the housing demand, and then as we're talking about our housing implementation plan, we've talked about potentially having tools to kind of curb growth. Somewhere word got out in the early two thousands that the housing market here was awesome, and clearly we see, you know, seven, twenty-three thousand people, I think, from two thousand to two thousand nine, if I remember the, the bar chart. And, um, you know, it's going to be tough because we can't have it both ways. We can't have the developers telling us that they don't want fees, but telling us at the same time we want to preserve our community and, and impact growth. It's like, well, we're doing exactly what the community's asked us to do by giving tools in our toolbox that could potentially curb some of that demand for land. If people aren't willing to pay to play, it's going to help kind of slow that growth in the long run. So I just think that, yeah, the developers don't want to pay fees, but really listen to what they've been asking us, again, pretty consistently as long as I've been up on the dais, is that they want to make their money, but they want to preserve the way our community's growing. And that makes it very challenging for us to navigate because we're not going to make them happy at every turn, because there's going to be things that impact their pocketbooks directly, and, um, you know, it's, it's kind of a bummer, but, you know, again, to Director Worley's credit, his staff has been very flexible and very open as long as I've been up here, and so I have no doubt that he'll continue to do so. But that's just, those are just my observations, and I hope this council takes that to eat.
Councilwoman Serrano, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions? Thank you again, uh, Director Worley, for your presentation. Thank you. Um, Councilman, uh, Campos, I, I have to agree. We've, we're trying to keep up with the, with the city. We're trying to keep up with the demand, and, um, I, I do feel, um, Director Worley, uh, with your, with support from City Manager and collaborations with, uh, Director Gonzalez and the full Economic Development Department has, uh, really made sure that City of Pasco is able to keep up with demand for housing, demand for, um, improvements, uh, to the infrastructure. And with that comes, um, how you supply the water. So I appreciate that. Uh, I appreciate that we're trying to keep up, and I just hope that our community understands that we are, um, we're making sure that we are able to, um, supply you with what you're asking for. Um, with that, um, there's, um, can I get a motion, uh, Mayor Protam, on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four-seven-zero-one, amending Pasco Municipal Code Section three point, excuse me, three-point-three-five-point-one-six-zero, water utility, adjusting the water rights acquisition fee, Section one-three-point-one-five-point-zero-three-zero, connection outside city limits, water rights and Section one-three-point-four-five-point-zero-six-zero, assignment of water rights, extension of city water services beyond city limits, and further authorized publication by title only.
I have a motion. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Blaisdell. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
And it still passes. Thank you. With that, we'll go on to our next item on the agenda, Resolution number four-four-zero-four, Amendment Number One to the City Manager Employment Agreement for, uh, Adam R. Lincoln, and we have Mr. Ferguson for Adam.
I'll jump in if it's all right, Mayor. Um, so, Mayor and council, I just wanted to say thank you for, um, for this, this year. I, I think we've, uh, as staff, we've, we've had a lot of room for growth and a lot of areas that we've, we've tried to accomplish. Um, I'll, uh, talk briefly about, uh, I think a favorite term for Councilmember Campos is the, the pillars um, that, uh, you've set forward as, as your areas of, of emphasis for, for your, your council goals. And, uh, I think as you've seen, as you've seen, there's, there's been a lot of, uh, accomplishment that the staff has made towards those goals, um, throughout the year. We've spent a lot of time on, on hiring new, new personnel, as you can see in front of you here, um, or certainly people who are in new positions with the city. Um, I, I'm greatly appreciative for the opportunity to continue to serve as the City Manager of Pasco, and, uh, greatly appreciate you considering the, um, the increase of one-point-five percent to my contract, so, um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ferguson, do you have additional comments?
No.
Okay, then, thank you again. Uh, do we have any questions or comments from council? Councilwoman Serrano, do you have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Uh, Mayor Protam Brown, can I get a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I happily move to approve Res-Resolution number four-four-zero-four, approving Amendment Number One to the City Manager Employment Agreement between the City of Pasco, Washington, and Mr. Adam R. Lincoln.
There is a motion. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Campos. All those, see, we all want to second that motion. Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. City Manager Adam Lincoln, thank you so much for this past year and, and before that, when you were, um, Deputy City Manager. Um, we have been able to create a very good relationship with you, um, to the staff, and we're just impressed with the work, um, and I'm sure there's more to come. Thank you again. Uh, with that, uh, we move on to item number seven on the agenda. Um, no further items on this special meeting agenda, so this special meeting, it is nine oh-three, and it is adjourned. But we're not done. Uh, there's more to come. Uh, so we are officially, uh, starting our, um, workshop meeting. Uh, with everything else, uh, all housekeeping items, uh, already taken care of. Um, I will open it to, um, number four, any verbal reports from council members? Um, any meetings, uh, events that you may have attended, or any, um, comments that you wish to add? Um, this is your opportunity. Moving right along, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, item number five, items for discussion. Uh, the mid-biennium capital improvement plan update, and turn it over for Director Buckley again for a report.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Uh, similar to the mid-biennium review for the budget, we have uh, completed work, uh, reviewing our capital improvement plan, uh, with the departments, and I'll just do a quick highlight. Uh, the capital improvement plan is a strategic guide of citywide improvements, and it includes both, um, essential projects that support and maintain, uh, current activities and operations at the city, uh, as well as future needs, and then aspirational projects also, uh, just looking for additions to community amenities. Um, and as such, there is potential, since it is a plan, that all projects will not be completed that are included. Um, if the plan does, uh, straddle all the departments of the city, it content, considers uh, various plans, comprehensive plans, strategic plans that are done for a specific and focused purpose, but then, uh, the departments work together and make one capital improvement plan, and that allows us to combine our needs, uh, evaluate, uh, comprehensively and both, uh, service needs and, uh, funding availability. The plan, um, I'm just gonna, sorry, uh, covers a six-year timeframe that just keeps rolling forward, uh, as we march through time, and it, uh, as I mentioned already, it is informed by other city plans and helps us collaborate that all together. Um, it, as the departments work through, uh, development of the capital improvement plan, they identify projects and then consider elements like land purchase right-of-way, uh, acquisition, the cost of design, construction and construction management, um, to make projects or include them in the capital improvement plan, and then as the project moves closer to reality, the costs are fine-tuned. Um, and it is important to note that until a project is included in the city's budget, uh, there is not authority for spending. Uh, so the capital improvement plan helps, uh, inform that budget plan as we, uh, assess, assess, uh, funding availability, uh, fine-tune those costs, and then add it in the budget for your consideration. Uh, at this point in time, the staff has met and, uh, evaluated their, uh, needs, or not needs, I guess, updates, both, uh, uh, aspirational and more certain projects. Um, the new projects have been added to the capital improvement plan, and then, of course, the existing projects are still listed there for council to review and, and, and for the public to see. Um, the projects are listed, uh, in your packet for ease of review, both separated, so that you can see the ones that were new to the plan as long, as well as the existing projects that may have been revised and, uh, as far as timing and dollars. And then, um, for also informative purposes, we've included a section that's just external party-driven projects. They aren't, uh, controlled by the city and would not necessarily be undertaken by the city, but as they're, uh, they can be substantial and influence city decisions, we wanted to point those out as well. Um, I'm going to do a quick highlight of the different projects that are mainly new projects to the plan, just so. Those were also included in your packet, uh, page for each new plan, just so you could see. It has, uh, a picture that's associated, the location, and then some, uh, s- small details, uh, to help you kind of get a vision of what the plan is and, and, um, you know, a little more. Uh, in the area of general government projects and parks projects, they sometimes facilities, I guess is a good way that, uh, could be categorized that benefit the community and our citizens. And the new projects included were, um, improvement of the animal shelter annex. Well, I know you've heard of that related to bond issuance, uh, that was not originally in that, uh, form in the CIP plan, so it's included now. Um, and then projects to serve to improve Pasco Specialty Kitchen, including kitchen equipment, and, uh, we have included a plan for a potential purchase of the Interwest Building, which is right in the same location as Specialty Kitchen, and, uh, so ideally located. And the purchase would allow for expanded opportunities for the Pasco Specialty Kitchen, which in turn, uh, serves, uh, local business and entrepreneurs and, and starting their businesses. Uh, another new to the project, um, our new project to the plan is, uh, River Shore Park, and the sequence of events that are outlined are, um, first a study and conceptual design followed by a land purchase, um, so this is new. Other improvements related to parks and facilities, um, are really to help, uh, augment usability, and they include things, uh, like single-stall loo's, which is also called a Portland loo. It's easier to maintain and clean, um, security lighting in the parks, and, uh, uh, the pavement of a, or paving of a park, farmer's market parking lot to make accessible a little easier for visitors. And then, uh, in the area of public safety, there meant, aren't many new public safety projects included in the CIP. Um, the most, there, there are two, and they're related to renovation to, uh, to buildings. Um, but there are large-scale projects that were existing and remain in the plan. But there are large-scale projects that were existing and remain in the plan. Those are the include are the upgrade of radio system equipment related to dispatch or the Benton County Emergency Services. An extension of fire station infrastructure and that placement and timing is definitely influenced by demand throughout the city. And then a regional law enforcement training facility and that, of course, is a new service provided by our police department and would be predicated on state funding. As far as utilities, the new projects include significant improvements to the Butterfield Water Treatment Plant. We have two water treatment plants, the West Pasco Treatment Plant in Butterfield. And so we're working hard to anticipate and plan improvements so that we can continue to serve customers well. And so the improvements for Butterfield, you'll notice are staged so that they can manage the the costs associated while also implementing the needed improvements in a timely manner. And then lift station improvements to support wastewater system efficiency and effective treatment, including lift station improvements at Ninth and Washington and Maitland. And a lift station improvement along that theme for the process water treatment facility. There are projects for coating it in in the plan that you have or the list that you have, it says, I think, painting, but it's a little more involved than painting. Their coating, the water and irrigation or the project would provide coating for the water and irrigation reservoirs that helps helps maintain the the towers and the reservoirs for long-term use. And then the addition of an irrigation well to augment capacity. And then transportation is our final category of improvements that we include in the capital improvement plan. And the the new projects that are of note are included are urgent widening from Road thirty-six to Road forty-four. And it would include illumination, stormwater, curb and gutter and sidewalks. Burn Burton Boulevard and Madison Avenue intersection improvements. And again, would include an installation of sidewalks and curb ramps and a traffic signal. And then pavement preservation projects at Ainsworth Avenue and Lewis Street. And similarly along that theme, includes pedestrian improvements like sidewalks and curb ramps. So things that council definitely has noticed priorities. So in summary, the projects included in this updated twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine CIP total about eight hundred and twenty-eight million dollars. That value is it represents a fourteen percent increase from the previous timeframe. And of that, a hundred and twelve million are those external partner or externally driven projects that the city would not fund, but are important to evaluate as we make other decisions. And then others areas of increase are that are notable are the water for the water utility and those parks improvements that I just reviewed. There the costs are significant, especially in the water department. But also with the two treatment plants, very valuable for our whole system. And then the improvements included in this plan, of course, are just a plan that we aren't asking for any budget authority right now for those projects. And they will be evaluated as we move into the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six biennial budget planning, where we will have more focus on funding availability and and appropriate timing and evaluate what should be included in the budget and bring that information back to council for your review. And that concludes my presentation on the capital improvement plan.
Your report. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Councilman Serrana, do you have any questions or comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
We do have a comment or question from Councilman Milne.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Director Buckley, I assume, like I have had constituents ask about certain projects. I assume the best way would be for instead of bringing it up here would be just to send you an email and so you could go through different. I don't want to take up too much time, but I do want to answer my constituents' questions, so I'll send it to you tonight.
That sounds good. Now I'll rely on other people probably to help me as well, so that's a good way to do it. We can collaborate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it brings up a good point. There's any information that we share during these meetings that you wish further explanation to, please feel free to reach out to us. If we can't get the information to you, please reach out to staff. I'm inviting staff into this now. They are the experts or they know the experts as well, so appreciate that. Let me see. Again, thank you, and we will be seeing this in December four meeting? Okay, alright, looking forward to that. And so thank you again, we'll try to wrap it up. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, item number six, miscellaneous council discussion, and I will hand it over to City Manager Adam Lincoln.
Don't have specific department updates tonight, but after what I'm guessing is going to be the next discussion, I wouldn't mind weighing back in again, please.
Any reports, Director of Fun? Okay, alright, with no, really no miscellaneous discussion from staff, I do want to let our community know that this is the last meeting for two of our appointed council members, Councilmember Campos and Council, Mayor Portem Brown. This is our last meeting as an appointed. But I do want to, before I open it up for any further comments, I do want to say thank you. Councilman Campos, thank you for always asking and for always participating as well in those meetings. They're very, have been very important for your participation, specifically talking about the BFT. And making that information available to your district and specifically to the Lakeview Community and over at the Vista de Moza Community. Two communities that have been for many years trying to get support, trying to get service out into that area and it took Amazon to come into the area and it took your advocacy and your hard work and pushing for these services specifically in that area, so I do want to say thank you very much for doing that and everything else that you've done for always questioning and for always giving your your input. Appreciate that. Mayor Portem Brown, thank you again. These last several weeks as having or months having you as Mayor Portem have been very helpful. You you are, you did step up to to a new role that you were probably not ready for and not prepared to really fill in, but I do appreciate you coming into participating to fill in a a void in council. So I just want to say thank you, always being prepared, always looking sharp. Thank you again for your service to city and to council. So with that, I'll hand it over if anyone has any other comments. And it looks like you do, Mayor Portem Brown.
Do you want to go first?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. It's been a pleasure knowing you guys and working with you. I will say that I really appreciate you guys both taking time out of your day to come visit me in the hospital when I got hit by the car. And I remember sort of think you were the only two that actually came to visit me in the hospital, so. Thank you very much. I know you brought me some food and I really do appreciate it. I do appreciate your friendship and yeah, it's gonna be different not having you guys here. And I will say your your style of dress is always inspired me. Definitely a better tailor have, but it's it's very sharp, so thank you. Again, Mr. Campos, it's always been a pleasure. I know you're spot on a lot of your stuff and I know you're kind of a laid-back guy, but I do appreciate your your words of encouragement for our city, so thank you.
I'll just jump in and say, I've appreciated both of you. You bring a certainly a different perspective than I do on some things and same perspective, and that's the beauty of our councils. We've worked really well together, even when there are disagreements on critical issues, even as we saw tonight. I've just, I've appreciated getting to know both of you and the character that you bring to this. So, you know, I I know that you'll both be out doing your thing. I I know you'll want to stay involved in the community and I appreciate the passion that you have for the city.
Thank you. And something before I turn it over to Councilwoman Roach, something that I neglected to add was that when we were selecting your positions as appointees, we were very strategic in putting people in these spots that were aware of their city, that brought new perspective, that brought new input, unique to your personalities. And so that really stood out when we were looking to appoint you both. Just wanted to make sure I added that. Councilwoman Roach.
Thank you, Mayor, and just want to echo some of the same sentiments that were shared earlier that you both will be missed on council, Campos and Mayor Portem Brown. I would like to say that, you know, it's been an honor to serve next to you, Councilmember Campos on Planning Commission, as well as on council. Didn't know we would have the chance to do that, but I guess it was opportune for us. And that I've appreciated your perspective on public works projects. I think that's something that, you know, maybe the public knows or doesn't know, we're not the expert of everything, but each one of us brings a certain knowledge or skill set to the job, and I think that you bring that to this job and have been able to lend that to that perspective to the rest of us, when we don't know those items as well. And Mayor Portem Brown, really appreciated this time that we've gotten to know each other on council and know that you have been, you know, prior to your appointment, you know, watched you put your name in for election previous to that. And you've always been authentic and struck me as somebody who is service-oriented. Your work on Juneteenth Pageant and being vocal about the the IDAC. I I think that, you know, it's for both of you, I'm just bummed out for Pasco that we don't get to have you up here. You both have a great deal of personal life experience as well as professional experience that I think Pasco would benefit from. And then on top of that, having an edge of having sat up here and done the work, because it's a really difficult job to do. So thank you for sacrificing your time and your peace of mind to do the job.
I'm gonna try to get through this just because I'm in, struggling over here, but I want to say, even though it's short-lived, I think we're going on three months of serving together, both of you were very welcoming coming in. I really didn't know what I was getting into. But everyone was welcoming and helped me through it, so I appreciate it. Mayor Portem Brown. I have a very my, the respect I have for you for what you had to walk through in your time serving. You are not done opening people's eyes and changing the world, so you have a light to you that people need to see shine. So do not let that light dim and keep on opening people's eyes, because you have something to share. So I definitely appreciate your journey and it's very moving to me, so. Thank you, both of you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor Portem Brown, or do you want to go first?
I may before or they.
Uh, City Manager Adam Lincoln.
Well, there's there's one thing that's inevitable and it's change and and we've we've had a a council with several appointed officials to to the to the seats up there. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that I, staff and myself are certainly appreciative of the fact that you you guys all put yourselves out there every day and standing up as, sitting up there, standing up as public servants is important for us us to see as staff and and your dedication is is very important as well. And I don't believe that anyone could argue that you both were anything but dedicated public servants and and took your appointed roles very, very seriously and it was an honor to work with you both and thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you both for your service. Mayor Portem Brown.
That was good, till a few minutes ago. But I'm glad I wrote it down, so I'm just gonna read it as I wrote it. To your butt before I get on script, off script, I'll say it again and I'm gonna say it in what I wrote. But this has been a different experience, call it that. But at the end of the different experience, there's been great enlightenment bonds that they'll just stick with me for a very long time. So with that being said, to Madam Mayor, Councilmember Staff and my fellow citizens, I am overwhelmed with the sense of gratitude and reflection on this, what I call a momentous occasion, because I made it. Serving as a city council member has been a profound privilege and I'm deeply humbled by the trust and the support that you, the people of this great city and the current council have placed in me. Throughout my time in office, I've strive to represent each and every one of you to the best of my abilities. I have listened to your concerns, fought your fights and worked tirelessly to create a better and brighter future for our community. It's been a journey filled with challenges, triumphs, and above all, a deep sense of purpose. As I prepare to step down from this role, I want to express my heartfelt thanks to all of those who have stood by me and worked alongside me. My colleagues on the council, city officials, community leaders and dedicated citizens, your unwavering commitment to the well-being of our city has inspired me every step of the way. Together, we have tackled challenges, issues, made difficult decisions and formed a path toward progress and unity. I am proud of the accomplishments that we have achieved together. We have, we have improved infrastructure, revitalized neighborhoods, strengthened local businesses. We prioritized public safety, environmental stability and celebrated our diversity and strive to create a city where everyone feels welcome and valued. But our work is far from over. As I pass the torch, I urge you to continue advocating for positive change and upholding the principles of justice, equality and compassion. Our city faces new challenges and opportunities on the horizon and it is imperative that we remain steadfast in our dedication to progress and unity. I implore you to stay engaged, hold your elected officials accountable and actively participate in our community civic life. Your voices matter and together we can shape the future of our city in a way that reflects the values and aspirations of us all. As a bid farewell to this chapter in my life, I do so with a profound sense of optimism and hope. I have a full faith, I have full faith in our city's potential and its people's remarkable spirit. The bonds we have formed, the accomplishments, accomplishments we have achieved and the sheer vision we have cultivated will endure long after my tenure has ended. But from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for the opportunity to serve as your council member and your mayor, Portem. It has been an honor and a privilege that I will cherish for the rest of my days. I am deeply grateful for the memories that has been created, the lessons that have been learned and the enduring legacy of our collective efforts. May the future of our city be filled with prosperity, harmony. May the future of our city be filled with prosperity, harmony and boundless efforts for each and every one of its inhabitants. I have every confidence that it will be so. And I and with that, I ask that you all consider the reinstatement of the I D E C Commission as soon as possible, um which has always um been one of my heart's desires with our commu- with all with can't even get it out now, I'm almost at the end, I can't get it out, which will allow our communities to have the voice and the representation needed to carry the voices to the powers that be to create and foster full diversity, equity and inclusion. Thank you and may God bless our beloved city named Pasco. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Portem Brown. Wow. Thank you. That's that's as much as I can say right now. Um that was that was that was very good. Do you have anything to say, Councilman Campos? Not as long.
Now I guess before I start, um I didn't put a lot of thought in this. Um again, as Councilman, Councilwoman Blaisdell said, nobody knows when they get ready to come up here what this entails and I'll be honest, I have genuine concern that that with the turnover we've had has been to the workload that people have only been able to sustain for so long. Not everyone's built like Councilman Milne who can work from his hospital bed with rods in his arms. Um and and it takes a special person to be able to to be there, right? We serve up here every Monday night, we go till late hours of the night, and then we serve on our appointments, which by resolution were appointed and those require a lot of them to have a public official there. And so for those of the councilmen elect that are coming in probably aren't really fully aware of our entire workload in ti- in addition to their day lives and their family lives, et cetera. Um one thing we always hear from council people who retire, step down, whatever it may be, is the common word they say is sacrifice. This comes with missing soccer games, missing basketball games, missing, you know, I I feel bad. Councilman-elect's got a one-year-old, and by the time his term is finished, he'll have a five-year-old. And all those memories that he may or may not have missed because he's here serving his community, it takes a toll on your family life, takes a lot on your personal life, as Councilman Brown, Mayor Portem Brown has experienced. It's gonna require that these council people become experts in process, that they rely on their legal counsel and that they really keep an open mind and open heart to things because again, while you may have a very vocal few constituents, the reality is is they're not your entire demographic. You have to serve your entire community the same. Our government is meant to treat people the same. And when we do preferential treatment for a particular group of people, um that's not how this is supposed to work. And those of you who know me, you can go to my bio on the website when I was appointed, I still haven't filled that out because it's not about me, it's never been about me. I don't have anybody in the audience that's here for me. I don't have fa- there's lots of family and friends that don't know to this day that I do this. Because I don't talk about it. I don't go to public places and it's not about when I walk into somewhere, it's about me being rather they not know. I've always been the man behind the curtain kind of guy. And uh I plan on still kind of being that man behind the curtain kind of guy again. There's been some things over the last few years that I've observed that have me I've got a little, I wouldn't say heartburn, but I want to keep my eye on how things progress with the council coming in. Because if the government doesn't work like it's intended to, somebody has to step in and hold us accountable. People have done it with us and we respect that, and the Councilman Serrano's point. I I fully appreciate, respect and enjoy the lack of group think. I think that having a difference of opinion and being able to be respectful and listen to one another's opinions, even if we don't agree, is so crucial to being able to make a better informed decision at the end of the day. And I expect that the next council is going to have its fair share of challenges. And I hope that you continue to treat one another with respect, the same level of decorum and that um again, you know, these incoming council members are gonna have to become experts pretty quick. And I hope that this council chooses to have those hard conversations with one another when people are maybe encroaching on a line that shouldn't be encroached on, rather than having the public do it. You all should hold yourselves accountable. So that's it. Again, it's not about me. I'd rather fade into obscurity and, you know, no one knows who I am. That's just fine with me. Um to that note, there's been a few things that I'm proud of that I've been able to do and that's increase um Ben Franklin Transit's ridership, a particular route in general. I know that growing up here and just in general, the public, the observation is that the buses are always empty. And myself and Commissioner Didier and Commissioner Mullen and a couple other of the commissioners for B F T worked really hard to try to, you know, get rid of that perception and and by doing that, we've increased ridership, we've streamlined routes. Uh I've been a tireless advocate for making sure that underserved communities get their ridership. We've got all youth under the age of eighteen ride for free without an increase to the taxes. Um that's kind of a big deal and so um I don't know that the community will continue to see that level of representation, but I hope that the, again, that you all encourage one another to be the best people that you can be.
Thank you, Councilman Campos. Um you're you're absolutely correct. Um I would I would invite the community as a whole to hold us all accountable. Um and and I'm just gonna keep saying this, um thank you for for that special focus on District Number Two um for the B F T um service. Um I myself and a few other community members have volunteered for years and um and it took us all to, we all spoke uh to people that needed to hear the needs in that specific area. Um unfortunately, you're right, uh ridership was not uh in high demand. Um but there was still a need because there was still a small group of people that needed these services. I'm not exactly sure how you did it, what you did, uh but you were there, you spoke up and you made sure that this particular community had service, has service. And so you're right, um I hope the next uh group of people, the next council members will continue to advocate. Uh not for the whole city, continue to advocate for every single individual in the city of Pasco. So thank you for bringing that up. Um is there any further questions or comments? Because this can go on and on. Uh not seen any, I will look right over to my chief and I am happily gonna let him know there is no executive session. Um and with that, it is nine thirty-nine. Uh this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for sticking around this long.